If we could have everyone's attention, please? We'd like to get started. At this point, I would ask that Governor Cody come on up to swear in our new board members. The first board member to come up, board member-elect, is Mohin Patel.
Nice to be here. Coming down Route 1 reminded me when I was going to school at Trenton Junior College, which is now Mercer County College. So I've been doing that up and down Route 1 for a long time, going back and forth to Trenton and everything else. I used to stop at a lot of places, and that is something I can tell you about. Are you ready, sir?
Yes, my wife is on her way, but that's fine. We'll do it right now.
This is your son?
This is my son. Stand there.
Brother.
He was just gonna give you the book.
Yeah.
All right. All right, state your name.
Mohin K. Patel.
Do you solemnly swear?
I solemnly swear.
Okay, now repeat after me. Wait till I finish. That I will support?
That I will support.
The Constitution of the United States?
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution?
And the Constitution.
Of the State of New Jersey?
Of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will?
That I will.
Bear true faith?
Bear true faith.
And allegiance to the same?
And allegiance to the same.
And to the governments?
And to the governments.
Established in the United States?
Established in the United States.
And in this state?
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people?
Under the authority of the people.
So help me God.
So help me God.
I?
I.
State your name.
Mohin K. Patel.
Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
That I possess?
That I possess.
The qualifications?
The qualifications.
Prescribed by law?
Prescribed by law.
For the office of?
For the office of?
Member of the Board of Education.
Member of the Board of Education.
And that I am not?
That I am not.
Disqualified as a voter?
Disqualified as a voter.
Pursuant to RS 19-4-1?
Pursuant to RS 19-4-1.
Good job. Nor disqualified?
Nor disqualified.
Due to conviction?
Due to conviction.
Of a crime or an offense?
Of a crime or an offense.
Listed in?
Listed in.
NJSA?
NJSA.
18A?
18A.
12-1?
12-1.
And that I will faithfully?
And that I will faithfully.
And impartially?
And impartially.
And justly?
And justly.
Perform all the duties?
Perform all the duties.
Of the office?
Of the office.
According?
According.
To the best of my ability?
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you, sir.
Hey, hey, hey. Can you hold for one second? My wife has just arrived. Rachel, come down. Did she deliver on time?
She actually did. On my birthday, my son was born.
Hi.
Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
Come on up.
My husband, can I have my son's?
Sure. Listen, Mr. White, just take a good look at her, because you're not gonna see her too often, okay? That was the plan. All right, I, state your name.
I.
Your name?
Virginia White.
Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support?
That I will support.
The Constitution of the United States?
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey?
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will?
And that I will.
Bear true faith?
Bear true faith.
And allegiance?
And allegiance.
To the same?
To the same.
And to the governments?
And to the governments.
Established in the United States?
Established in the United States.
And in this state?
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people?
Under the authority of the people.
So help me God.
So help me God.
I, again, state your name?
I, Virginia White.
Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
That I possess?
That I possess.
The qualifications prescribed by law?
The qualifications prescribed by law.
For the office of?
For the office of?
Board of Education.
Board of Education.
And I am not?
And I am not.
Disqualified as a voter?
Disqualified as a voter.
Pursuant to RS?
Pursuant to RS?
19?
19.
4-1?
4-1.
Nor disqualified?
Nor disqualified.
Due to conviction?
Due to conviction.
Of a crime?
Of a crime.
Or offense?
Or offense.
Listed in?
Listed in.
NJSA?
NJSA.
18A?
18A.
12-1?
12-1.
And that I will?
And that I will.
Faithfully?
Faithfully.
Impartially?
Impartially.
And justly?
And justly.
Perform all the duties?
Perform all the duties.
Of that office?
Of that office.
According to the best of my ability?
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
You're in.
Thank you.
Congratulations. And here. I got a final fourth ring when I was the assistant coach in 89.
Really?
Should've been the championship, not runner-up. You weren't even thought of back then.
Oh, picture.
Want to get a picture?
Picture?
Yeah.
Picture.
Can you get it?
Thank you so much.
Thank you. A wrestle.
Drama or a wrestle. How about you?
I won't get that. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Now, Mr. Patel?
No, our next board member-elect is actually Jerry Shi.
I'm sorry. 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 I'm sorry.[558.11]
Just making sure we should have eight. Okay.
It is appropriate for you to read both the
The person, get it?
The person and the vote.
Mr. Patel voted for Jerry Shi. Mr. Shi voted for Jerry Shi. Mrs. White voted for Jerry Shi. Mrs. Podolsky voted for Elizabeth Conway. Dr. Chen voted for Jerry Shi. Elizabeth Con- I'm sorry. Elizabeth Conway voted for Mrs. Con- Elizabeth Conway. Mrs. Madigore voted for Elizabeth Conway. And Mrs. Pang voted for Jerry Shi.
The vote is, do you want me to read the vote? It's the five for Mr. Shi. So Mr. Shi is president?
Five votes for Mr. Shi, three votes for Mrs. Conway for president. Mr. Shi, you are the board president.
Thank you everyone for your support. Now we go on for the nomination of the vice president. Do I have a motion for a vice president?
Just nominations.
Nomination, yes. Motion to nominate a vice president. Okay?
I nominate Elizabeth Conway.
Okay. Okay, anybody else for second nomination?
I nominate Mohan Patel.
Okay, I second the nomination of Mohan Patel.
Remember, you don't need this.
I don't need it, okay. So, alright, so we go through the process.
Yes, you just want to make sure there are no more.
Do we have any more nominations? Okay? Okay? Yeah, you want me to read it already? Okay, cool. Okay. Okay, let me just go through the vote. And Mrs. Conway voting for, Mrs. Conway for vice president. And Mrs. Podolsky voting for Mrs. Conway for vice president. Two votes. Mrs. Maduga voting for Mohan Patel. Mr. Patel voting for Mohan Patel. Dr. Chen voting for Mohan Patel. Jerry Shi voting for Mohan Patel. Mrs. Penn for Mohan Patel. Mrs. White voting for Mohan Patel. Six-two, so Mohan Patel, he was the vice president. Thank you. So move on, we have the approval of the parliamentary procedure. Can I have a motion for that?
Motion.
Okay, Mrs. Penn, second. Okay, Mrs. Conway. Roll call.
I gotta make sure I do it in the right order now.
You need, which one you need to read? You need to read one of it, right?
You have to read the ethics, the next one.
The ethics, okay.
Rule call. Carol Podolsky?
Yes.
Dr. Chen?
Yes.
Elizabeth Conway?
Yes.
Shivvi Madigore?
Yes.
Shannon Pang?
Yes.
Virginia White?
Yes.
Mohan Patel?
Yes.
And Jerry Shi?
Yes.
Next, the adoption of a state mandated code of ethics. Before we move on, I've, Dr. Bragan, if you can read it. And we all need to sign it after the meeting.
I have it.
Are you gonna read it? Okay. You're gonna read it? Okay. Thank you, sorry.
And this is pursuant to NJSA eighteen A twelve dash twenty-four point one. It's the code of ethics for board members that requires that a board member abide by the following code of ethics for board members. It's also part of the board policy bylaw oh-one-four-two. I will, A, I will uphold and enforce all laws, rules, and regulations of the State Board of Education and court orders pertaining to schools. Desired changes shall be brought about only through legal and ethical procedures. B, I will make decisions in terms of the educational welfare of children and will seek to develop and maintain public schools that meet the individual needs of all children, regardless of their ability, race, creed, sex, or social standing. C, I will confine my board action to policymaking, planning, and appraisal, and I will help to frame policies and plans only after the board has consulted with those who will be affected by them. D, I will carry out my responsibility not to administer the schools, but together with my fellow board members to see that they are well-run. E, I will recognize that authority rests with the Board of Education and will make no personal promises nor take any private action that may compromise the board. F, I will refuse to surrender my independent judgment to special interests or partisan political groups or to use the schools for personal gain or for the gain of friends. G, I will hold confidential all matters pertaining to the schools, which if disclosed would needlessly injure individuals or the schools. In all other matters, I will provide accurate information and, in concert with my fellow board members, interpret to the staff the aspirations of the community for the school. H, I will vote to appoint the best qualified personnel available after consideration of the recommendation of the chief school administrator. I, I will support and protect school personnel in proper performance of their duties. And J, I will refer all complaints to the chief school administrative officer and will act on the complaints at public meetings only after failure of an administrative solution. So it is resolved that the school board members serving the Edison Board of Education acknowledge that they have received a copy of the Code of Ethics for School Board Members and understand the responsibilities that they are undertaking as members of the Edison Board of Education.
Thank you. So we have this piece of paper, we all need to sign this. Do you need to vote on this as well?
I think so.
Yes, well, you should vote to approve, and then you should sign it, please.
Okay. Alright, can I have a motion to adopt the state mandated code of ethics? Okay?
The vote was from whom?
Mrs. Podolsky and Dr. Chen.
Okay.
Roll call.
Roll call. Carol Podolsky?
Yes.
Dr. Yun Chen?
Yes.
Elizabeth Conway?
Yes.
Shivvi Madigore?
Yes.
Shannon Pang?
Yes.
Virginia White?
Yes.
Mohan Patel?
Yes.
Jerry Shi?
Yes.
Vote, motion passes.
Motion passes. Okay, so we'll sign this and give it to Dr. Bragan after the meeting. Next is the reorganization meeting resolutions. The first item is designation of deposits for the twenty, 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 twenty-one signatures. Basically, the board president is the one who's gonna be the signatory over here and superintendent. And the next is the meeting day, so I read these meeting days? Yeah?
Yes.
Okay. So here are the meeting days for this year. On January twenty-first, we'll have January twenty-first and January twenty-sixth, we'll have both meetings at JP Stevens. One's the caucus, the other is a public meeting. February eighteen and February twenty-third, we're back at Edison High School. March eighteen and March twenty-third, JP Stevens. April twenty-second, April twenty-seventh, two meetings back at Edison High School. And for May fifth, we have a special budget hearing, personnel reapportment at the JP Stevens High School. In May twentieth and May twenty-five, we have our regular meetings, caucus, and public meeting at JP. June tenth and June fifteenth, both meetings at Edison High. And in the summertime, we have July twenty-seventh, one meeting at JP. August twenty-four, one meeting at Edison High. On September twenty-third and September twenty-eighth, both meetings at JP. October twenty-first, October twenty-sixth, both meeting at Edison High. November eighteen and November twenty-third, meeting at JP Stevens. And the last meeting of the year, the last December sixteen and December twenty-first, both meeting at Edison High School. And next year's reorganization meeting is June third at JP. Thank you. Can I have a motion to approve these two resolutions?
Motion.
Okay, Mr. Patel and Mrs. Conway. Roll call, please.
Carol Podolsky?
Yes.
Dr. Yun Chen?
Yes.
Elizabeth Conway?
Yes.
Shivvi Madigore?
Yes.
Shannon Pang?
Yes.
Virginia White?
Yes.
Mohan Patel?
Yes.
And Jerry Shi?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Motion passes. Alright, move on, we have board member open discussions. Board members, any comments? Yes, Shivvi.
Just wanted to congratulate the two newly elected and the one re-elected, Jerry Shi, Mohan Patel, and Virginia White on their election. And, and I look forward to working with all of you. That's all, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
I would like to thank everyone here for coming out and giving us your support. And also the people that are watching on YouTube right now, live, thank you guys so much. This is an extraordinary moment. We have one thing that we have to do here as board members is to give our students nothing less than excellence, which is our motto for the Board of Education, and that I will be doing, sitting here, with all your support. Thank you so much.
Yes, Mrs. White.
Okay. I want to say thank you to my husband, my sons, my entire family, and friends, old and new, for their unconditional support. I have always worked in a support capacity for the district. Now I welcome the opportunity to continue to support the children, parents, staff, administration. To the twelve thousand eight hundred plus people that voted for me, a heartfelt thank you. This has always been a wonderful district, incredible. I look forward to working with this amazing board. For me, this is a wish come true. Thank you so much.
Okay. So, yes, okay, Mrs. Conway, sorry. Yeah, go ahead.
Okay. I would just like to take the time to welcome Mohan and Jenny to the board. And I'm looking forward to working with both of you. And I'd also like to congratulate Jerry and Mohan for taking over president and vice president. And hopefully we'll all work together, and this will be another successful year in Edison. Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay. So, I have a statement I'd like to make. Good evening, Happy New Year. On behalf of the Board of Education, I want to extend my gratitude to all those in attendance, both here physically as well as virtually. As we begin this new year, I want to once again recognize our outgoing board members, Faughon Patel and Beth Maroni. Also, some of you might have, some of you might not aware, we have an empty seat there, that Mr. Aragó last day on the board was December thirty-first. I want to take this opportunity to recognize his contribution to our district. Mr. Aragó served on this board for five straight years, plus he was assigned to the board for well over two years at two different times. I want to especially recognize him over the last year when he co-captain the district with Faughon, along with Dr. Bragan, our administrators, and staff through a turbulent twenty-twenty. Thank you, Mr. Aragó, for your leadership and your service. I want to recognize our special guest, the Honorable Governor Richard Cody. Governor Cody was kind enough to be here with us tonight to administer the oath of office to our incoming board members. And we are grateful to him, not just for being with us tonight, but his service and dedication to all the residents in this state. Governor Cody is the longest-serving state legislator in New Jersey history, and he has been a steadfast proponent of fair school funding. He is an advocate for the inclusion of diversity in the curriculum. His efforts have resulted in important legislations in issues pertaining to mental health and addiction services, issues that are more important than ever during COVID-nineteen. I was hoping that he could stick around to have a twelve-hour district, a twelve, have a twelve-hour school, but I, I think he, is he still here or he has, he has left? Huh?
He had to go.
Huh? He's left, okay. So, we look forward to a strong partnership with Governor Cody and the leadership in Trenton as we advocate for greater funding from Trenton to our school district. Each new year bring a new hope and new promise. I look forward to working with all our board members, our administrators, educators, staff, parents, students, and our school community. I want to welcome Mrs. Virginia White, Mr. Mohan Patel to the board. I'm confident that they will enhance our board and our school district. I'm confident, I'm confident that if we work together, we can reduce the financial burden placed on taxpayers in Edison without sacrificing the quality of our education system. I'm confident that we will put the word "public" back into the Edison Public Schools by creating a more open, accessible, and resident-friendly education center that communicates with public in a timely manner. I'm confident that we will prioritize the health and wellness of our students and staff and give our school community the resources they need. Most importantly, I'm confident that we will be able to ensure our seventeen thousand students are offered the best education possible as our schools continue to shine brighter than ever. Thank you. Now we're open for public comments. So anyone? Okay, Yash?
I can still take my mask off?
Yes.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Yash Pandya, twenty Arbor Circle. I'd like to echo some of the things that the board members have said tonight. A hearty congratulations to our new board-elect members. We have a strong transition team here. You guys worked very hard, part of your campaign and efforts and initiatives to put into the Board of Education here. And I hope that you will continue this hard work to put towards our students, our taxpayers, and our parents. And I look forward to seeing the accomplishments and initiatives that you all have promised us and the community and part of Edison. So best of luck, good wishes to you all, and thank you, and Happy New Year.
Thank you. Next? Okay, Andy?
He can end up for you. Andrew Hy- Andrew Hybel, Howard Avenue, Edison. Congratulations to all the newly board members. I had a question about, I know Dr. Bragan is the superintendent, but don't we have an acting board secretary that was appointed in December?
We do.
So how come the acting board secretary didn't run the meeting? I just wondered, is that a, is this gonna be illegal, meeting that was done improperly?
It's totally legal.
Okay.
I'm a certified school business administrator, and I felt that the importance of this meeting presiding over the presidency would warrant my attention. That's why I took the helm.
I, I understand that, but I know we have rules and regulations, and if we have an acting-
It's in accordance with the rules and regulations.
Okay, I'm not done.
Just one meeting.
So if we have an acting business administra- board secretary, who's gonna be doing the acting business administrator's job? Is anybody gonna be doing that job?
Your question is-
Is anybody gonna be doing the-
At the board meetings, at the daily functions of the school?
Yeah, who's gonna be doing the VA job?
The day-to-day functions, the things that require a school business administrator certification will fall under my authority.
So you're gonna be-
Until we find an interim that's gonna fill that position for a period of time or a permanent solution. In, in the interim, our assistant business administrator will help out to the greatest extent possible, as she has always done. Mrs. Ann Gluck.
Now, I know we didn't have a meeting in Nov- December on that Thursday because of the weather, but it was on the agenda that you were gonna be hiring a company. You did not hire a company?
We did not.
Okay.
We're still looking.
So just for the record, you're gonna be doing both the VA job at the board office and the superintendent's job?
Until we get an interim, I'm gonna do the best I can.
Oh, it's not too bad, okay. And congratulations to the new board members, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, okay.
I'm Kita Bundy, three-one-eight West Street Drive. First of all, congratulations, Mohan.
Thank you.
Mrs. White and Jerry for your ticket. And Happy New Year. Mr. Bragan? I would like to thank you for a wonderful year that you had last year. And I truly appreciate, and I truly expect you and the rest of the board members will work within your team, and you guys will give us another wonderful new year. Wonderful, you know, year that will be delivered. Mr. Mohan, and, you know, before, you know, we campaigned for you, you know, I've been a strong supporter of Shivvi, you know, in fact, you know, we supported her, and now you are here. But there is one thing that I don't want to bring, a negativism or pessimism into this meeting. But I wanted to warn you that there is already enough pessimism in the social media. You know, there are, the traction of the BOE, the education about the BOE, the number of people that contested, the number of votes that polled, shows that people are showing interest. So majority of the people chose you, but few of them wanted you to fail. Some people are already spewing venom in the social media. And I think this is a motivation for you, this group, to be successful and prove everybody wrong. And there is no question of polarization and all inclusiveness. And this city and this town is going to flourish under your leadership. And our students and taxpayers will benefit because of the promises that you guys made. And I think Jerry, your team has made certain financial goals, and we expect them to be delivered, not at the cost of kids losing it. And we, as citizens and voters, will support you. And, you know, considering some of the meetings that happened in the past, you know, I, it always emerges me that drama continues in Edison. So I can only say one thing. When you don't have a reason, when you don't have a logic, the only place that people go to is drama. So please don't indulge into the drama, and please make yourself comfortable with the logic and reasoning, and deliver the best for the Board of Education. And some people ask that, where is the policy? Where are the rules? In my view, I always worked on two principles. Ethics doesn't need rules. Ethics doesn't need policies. You know, ethics only tells you two things. It's a difference between what rights you have versus what is right to do. I wanted you guys to do what is right to do. Forget about, you know, what others think of it. Go by the rules, but still do what is right to do. And you know, the last one, my famous quote from physics, "Theory of relativity only applicable to physics, not to the ethics and integrity." You guys are the best chosen by the people, and we want you to deliver the best to the town. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, Crystal? Yeah, I got a tip. You want to? You wanna save the best for the last? Okay, cool.
Tony T. Pescual, two Pine Street. First, I do want to congratulate those that are now on the, on the board. And now, after today, that everybody's been sworn in, I think it's really time for everybody to work and work together. And there's a few things that I, I just want to bring up. And Mr. Shi, since you are now the president, and these have come from when you were running for office, I just have a few, few questions that you had on your website. And I'm, I'm just curious, the zero percent budget, great. If we can do that, fantastic. But as far as cutting waste and the vendor oversight, how, how do the citizens, and how would the citizens know that the waste has been cut? And as far as vendor oversight, is there going to be a total revamping of, you know, the review of getting paid over twenty-five thousand dollars? Is, is that gonna be a policy set in, in the Board of Education now? And will the citizens be able to see the list of vendors that the board uses? Or is that just private to the board? Because as, as you said, that, you know, communication is very important to the citizens. And I don't know if that's been done in the past, but I would just think that it would be definitely helpful to the citizens to see what vendors are being used by the Board of Education. You know, just, just for that checks and balances that I think are due to us. The other, the other thing that, that I saw on the website was the parent help desk. And at the bottom of the page, it says, "With your support, we will implement this system as soon as we are elected." So my question to you is, what, what does that mean when we are elected? Does that mean this parent help desk is gonna be activated next week, next month? Again, these things were, were promised to the citizens, to the ones that, that voted for you, and, and the others on their team. And as far as the remote learning, the Edison First Team supports a routine start time and dismissal to the school day. Is that happening now, or is that something that is gonna have to be changed? And as far as improving the quality and learning experience, how is that gonna happen? Is that gonna be, again, immediate change? Is it gonna be something that's gonna take a while? Again, as you said, I, I think, and I've, I've said in the past, you know, the, the board needs to show accountability to the citizens, even the ones that did not vote for those that are on this board. And the accountability will bring a better relationship between the citizens and those that are on this board, which I think is very important. And as I've said in the past, when the bond was put up, I really believe that didn't pass because there's a lack of trust between the citizens and the Board of Education. And without that trust, you're not gonna get anything done. And that's something that I think really needs to be focused on, and you really need to, everyone on the board needs to show the citizens that we can trust you with the decisions for our children. So again, I hope for everyone that you can work together for our kids. This will be a great year, a lot of good changes will be made. And I do agree with the prior person about negativity, but I don't feel that challenging is negativity. Because as citizens, we are to challenge every government official that is elected or put in place. And that challenge is not negativity. That challenge is the right we have as Americans and citizens to say, "I disagree with you, I think you are wrong." Now, if you see that as negativity, then I, I would differ with that, with that there. But we have every right, and I think every citizen should realize, you have every right to attend the Board of Education meetings, you have every right to email all the board members and all the administrators and the school district. Everybody, we have the right to do that. And the only way we can help the Board of Education and our students is by continuously challenging, because that's the checks and balances that were put in this place, in this country hundreds of years ago. And this is what has made our country what it is. It's one of the, it is the greatest country in the- It's one of the, it is the greatest country in the world because we have the checks and balances. It is our duty to make sure that we follow through on that. Thank you.
Thank you. To answer your questions, yes, we have, I'm not, I'm not, not back and forth.
I'm leaving my mask.
Okay, so, uh, we have already started the initial discussions with superintendent. And some of the things can be, you know, delivered quickly, some will be delivered later. But the promise that the Edison First Team has, has done, we will deliver. And the Edison First Team started with three members. And I hope the Edison First Team, after today, becomes eight members. And after that, will be nine members that are on the Edison First Team that will work for the best interest of Edison residents, our students, and our parents. So, anybody else? You're the last one.
Mr. Shi, just to answer that question about the vendors, just so everyone's aware, no vendor can be paid unless they were board approved. Normally, they're all approved at the annual meeting and those that occur outside the annual meeting are placed on agendas, as you would see, for whatever particular service. As Mr. Highball mentioned earlier, in November, we contracted, um, we approved the service for an interim business administrator service that they were unable to complete. But every vendor is board approved regardless of how much they get paid. And then each board meeting is a bills list that's approved that are the payments towards those vendors after the services have been provided and they've been vetted and purchase orders have been, um, secured. And we have ensured that those services were delivered. So there's a process already, but I do believe, um, you know, we can continue to look at that process.
Yeah, I just want to add on to that about vendor oversight. And the Edison First Team, the, the campaign promise was twenty-five thousand. But we already asked Dr. Bragan to provide us a list of all the vendors. We paid more than ten thousand dollars this year. So once we have that list, we'll go through that list and we'll go from there. Thank you.
Let me ask, one, one caveat. Would you like to just mention that there is, though, the delegated authority? But those bills all show up on the bills list.
You just did, I think.
Okay. So while-
Thank you.
There, there is a delegated authority to the school business administrator. And so those bills you see on the bills list, but they may not be specifically board approved.
Okay, so Crystal, your turn.
All right, Crystal, Middlesex County. What's up, Jerry?
Good.
All right.
Happy New Year.
Happy New Year to you too. We meet again, you as, uh, board president. I like how I always get my five minutes, even, uh, if I'm accusing you of taking over the world.
See, on a school board, you got six-
Restart my time, please.
On a school board, you got six minutes. On a council, you got less than that, so.
Uh, how many minutes we got?
You got six minutes, man.
Six minutes, alright. So, um, yeah, like I said before, you know, I like how I get all my time here with you. Even though, uh, I could be accusing you of trying to take over the world, that, that couldn't be done on the town council level. I can't, can't even go in there and say hello. North Grave will throw me out, so I like that. I love coming to these meetings.
Yes.
As you notice, I'm not recording because I already know my, you guys are gonna respect my rights, so I, there's no reason for me to record. I already feel safe when I come in here. I don't think my rights are gonna be violated, but with that said, code of ethics, four. I will refuse to surrender my independent judgment to special interests or partisan political groups or to use a school for personal gain or for the gain of friends. I believe some Board of Education members are walking ethical violations. So does this mean that we did, uh, ratified the code of ethics today that some members are gonna walk out of the, um, the Board of the Edison Democratic Organization, maybe give up their spots as committee people?
Continue your questions.
It's a, it's a legitimate question because-
Yeah, just go, finish all your questions, 'cause I don't want to take your six minutes.
Because I, I feel if you ratified this code of ethics today, whoever's a committee person, whoever might be a vice chair, whatever, in, um, the EDO, they may have to resign, I don't know. Lawyer, I'm gonna, I'm gonna check to see if today's, uh, meeting was even legal. Because if it wasn't, like Andrew said, what's up, Andrew, true American patriot back there? If this, uh, meeting was illegal, I'm gonna make sure the whole thing struck from the record, just to, uh, watch you guys do it again. Alright, I'm warning you on that right now. So, how much time do I got left, lawyer?
Three minutes and twenty-two seconds.
Three minutes?
You got a lot of time, Crystal.
Not enough time. So the zero percent budget was a lie. Everybody lies, but I don't really wanna waste my three minutes on that. So let's talk about Erica's spot. Erica left on the thirty-first. I was, um, I was specifically waiting for him to do it on the record, but knowing that this is Edison, New Jersey, things happen behind the scenes. I mean, I was told months ago it was gonna happen. I didn't believe it. Even if it was gonna happen, I was waiting for it to happen on the record so I can, um, give you guys my resume, as it seems he just up and vanished, not even-
I'll just, just address the process.
Not even during the public meeting. So this way, people like me cannot leave our resumes. And I do believe, when I do drop on, letting you all know I'm leaving my resume to all of you, um, I'm probably gonna be the most qualified again. You're gonna look over me, it's alright. Not everyone on here, but most people on here. Jerry, I expect your vote, man, even though, you know, I come after you all the time. We can make a love story. We don't have to be friends. You know what I'm saying?
I like to walk with, I like to walk with everyone.
Let's make a love story. At least if you put me on the board, they can't say it wasn't political 'cause most of you don't even want me on the board. We can at least agree to that one. So, you know, um, yeah, that's how we're gonna solve it. Again, attorney, we're gonna go, we're gonna make sure that this whole meeting was, was legal. I, I don't believe it was. Bragan, I'm gonna take your word for it. I don't think you're lying, but sometimes things slip through our fingers, you know? And we're all human, so. Yeah, thanks for always respecting my rights when I come in here. Thanks, uh, uh, you know, I appreciate that, not kicking me out for no reason. Yeah, and I wish to see more parents coming in here accusing teachers of stuff, whatever it might be, trying to destroy the moon, whatever. Because, no, it's not meant to be a joke, because recently, we've had members of the public, they were told, you know, always told, "This is slander, that's slander." No, no, you can accuse, I can come up here and accuse you, Jerry, and say, "Hey, Jerry, I think you tried to cut my brake lines." I mean, yeah, you can try to hit me for slander, but then you gotta try to prove that I didn't truly believe that. You see what I'm saying? You are a public figure, Jerry. It is a matter of public interest and you, you understand what I'm saying?
I understand, absolutely.
So let's not have anyone threatened with slander anymore. I'm gonna see more parents coming in here accusing you guys, teachers, whatever. Um, 'cause that's what this is for. It's a public meeting. It's not your meeting, it's our meeting. It's our meeting to accuse you of being corrupt, not you specifically, all of you in general. I'm not picking on you, Jerry. And, uh, yeah, uh, is that my time?
Seven seconds, seven?
Seven seconds?
Six.
God bless you. January seventh's gonna be the Orthodox Christmas. So the party hasn't stopped yet. We're gonna continue the party all the way to January seventh. God bless you, all of you.
Thank you.
And, yep.
Thank you.
Alright.
Alright, so you know you're always welcome, right, over here?
Oh, yeah, yeah, you can tell us how, how, how the resume-
So the, uh-
Mr. President, may I make one comment, though? I just, I've heard the, the comment, I'm just, I just wanna make a clarifying statement about the, uh, introduction of, and the, uh, the, both the swearing in was done accordance to, with the state statute. And there is no obligation, even though this board is lucky enough to have a superintendent with dual certifications, there's actually no requirement that the person who conducts the meeting have a, um, school business administrator certificate. The board, uh, may appoint the school business administrator, or the board can appoint anyone as pro temp.
Thank you. So I think the, uh, you talked about ethics violations and so on. Yeah, so, um, I think the best way to do that, if you think any board members had violated any ethics, is ethics board. You can go, uh, uh, um, you know, submit that and go through that process. And about your comments of everybody lies, I don't know about that, but I can tell you one thing for sure, the zero percent budget is gonna happen.
Absolutely.
Alright, so you're gonna see it? You're gonna, you're gonna, you're gonna see it, and I hope you come here and apologize for what you said. Okay? Alright, uh, as far as you mentioned, the, uh, the appointment process for the empty seats, you know, um, uh, let me just, um, tell everyone that I don't know if we do need additional advertising or so on, so hope, correct me if I'm wrong. In the past, what we have done is, um, we have asked all the candidates to submit, all the people who have interest to submit the, their interest to us, okay? So in this case, I would ask you to submit, at least to me and, and, and Vice President Mohan Patel, you're more than welcome to copy all the board members, okay? What you can do, you can just say, "Hey, you know, I am interested in this position." If you wanna attach your resume, that's even better, okay, so we can review it. Once we have everybody, okay? And, uh, can we have a, a, a date of, uh, January fifteenth as a deadline?
Yes, you may.
Okay, January fifteenth, uh, the, you know, midnight, we'll have the deadline. So anyone who's, who, who submits that, uh, interest, we're gonna invite this person to our next board meeting, which is January twenty-first, okay? Everyone will come to the podium, have their five, six minutes. The board members can, you know, ask questions. Then we go back and we discuss and we come back and we appoint, okay? This is the accordance with our policy. And I just checked with our board attorney, that's the policy that, that, you know, we're gonna follow. And this is a practice we've been following in the past. So submit your resume, okay? At lea- at least to me and, and Mohan. You're more than welcome to copy the entire board, 'cause our, uh, emails are on the website, alright?
And it's in accordance with Board Policy oh-one-four-three.
Do we need to do any more advertising or?
I would recommend that you post it on your website, but you don't have to do a public advertisement.
Okay, so we're gonna post it on the website and, uh, we'll have, uh, the fifteenth, the Friday, I think it's the fifteenth, the Friday, right, as a deadline? And on the twenty-first, we'll go through the process, alright? You know, we're always fair, right? Okay. Alright, any other public comments? Oh, oh, Maria, I'm sorry. You have rebuttal, okay. No, you're not rebuttaling.
Sorry.
You can rebuttal, you can call me, you can rebuttal each other, right?
Maria Orchid, Edison. I just wanna say congratulations to everyone. Congratulations, Jerry. Congratulations, Mohan. Congratulations, Virginia. And I look forward to working with everyone for the children of Edison. Shine bright. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Maria. Any other public comments? You come again? No, no, you can, no, can you die? What are we gonna rebuttal for? What are we gonna rebuttal for?
God bless you. I love you, Jerry. So the rebuttals return back to the Board of Education? I didn't really wanna, oh, Crystal, Middlesex County, you can start my time. I didn't really wanna do a rebuttal, but I just wanted to make sure, yeah, it came back. So now it's on the record. Everyone saw it. All the Board of Ed members saw it. Jerry is allowing the, um, rebuttals that sometimes Erica would be like, "Alright, yeah, you can do them, alright, whatever." So it's all the time rebuttals here?
Pop, what are they?
It will all depend on the time.
Okay.
Um, and it can, there's only rebuttal in the event everyone who wants to speak has spoken.
Okay.
But it is, actually becomes, uh, at the discretion of the board president in accordance with the policy.
Absolutely. I just, even though it's at your discretion, if you let people do it some of the time, not all the time, can be looked at as discriminatory.
I try to be consistent.
So let's allow it all the time.
I try.
Look, I wanna do a public service announcement that anyone who wants a, a seat on the Board of Education, hey, hand in your resume. You heard Jerry Shi, he said, uh, you have until January fifteenth. Any member of the public can, uh, hand in their resume and what would they need? They would need five votes.
Yeah, well, where the board, yeah.
Five votes.
Majority of the votes.
We, we don't want that racist, um, the county superintendent, uh, Kyle Anderson. If, uh, it's gonna become his pick if you guys don't get the five votes. But we're not gonna allow that. We're gonna make sure Edison picks. We're not gonna let out of town. Make sure Kyle Anderson doesn't pick, alright? So, yeah, make sure if you wanna hand in your resume, you should do it because, um, up until this moment, I believe they were gonna try to get their own people in here. Probably people from the EDO. I mean, three of the people that I heard, um, and I'm not saying that it was-
Don't, don't believe speculations. Don't believe speculations.
I, I understand.
Just a little voice here.
It just happens to be the three people who were prepared to take Erica's spot before anybody else. They all came from one place, um, the EDO. They all, I'm not gonna mention anything on it, it just seems highly suspicious. And the best thing we should do to be completely transparent about this process is all of you go on Facebook, say, "Hey, everybody, hand in your resume, January fifteen. We don't want another EDO rat stuck on the, um, uh, BOE. It's supposed to be non-political." You, you see what I'm saying? Why is it that, oh, and, and about congratulations for winning, um, and everything. I'm always gonna congratulate whoever wins. But at the same time, I do wanna state the obvious, that those who win won because they were endorsed by Edison Democratic Organization. And, um, it's gonna continue to be that way for a long time. Yeah, how, how much time do I got?
Three minutes and one-
Three minutes, alright. So members of the public, strongly encouraged to put their names in, whether retired teachers. Hopefully, all non-political people are gonna, you're gonna get flooded in. You guys thought you were gonna come January fifteen, have three names, and, and they were gonna be three or four names that you all already knew, friends of yours. No, that's not the way this, this is gonna work. Everybody in Edison, hopefully, it's, you guys are gonna get flooded with a hundred, uh, resumes. That's my goal.
Yeah, it's gonna be a long meeting.
Even though you should vote me out of all those hundred, I'm saying, I still love the process. It's democracy.
I'll look at your resume.
Alright, alright, and, um-
You know I do that all the time, right?
No, no, I know you look at it. Doesn't mean you'll vote on me, but I think, I think I got a good chance with you. I think I, I think I got five up here where, uh, you know, we're honest to ourselves and, and we're not-
Okay, good luck. Try, try, go through the process.
Forced by outsiders to say, "Hey, let's keep him out of here," 'cause you know that's gonna happen. You know Kyle Anderson is even gonna try to do it, that racist who, uh-
He's not even part of this discussion. Let's, let's move on.
My time, is my time up?
You have one minute and forty-five seconds.
One minute and forty-five seconds, brother. Thank you for being my time clock, though. Yeah, we don't want, um, the Middlesex County Superintendent in the schools, uh, the Woodbridge Councilman Kyle Anderson to, uh, pick for us. Um, just, let's see his past, um, promoting, um, cops should be killed.
But that's not part of this.
No, no, this is a public, this is a public meeting and he is a public figure.
We have nothing, it had nothing to do with Edison, you know.
It has everything to do with Edison. He, he is our county superintendent, is he not?
No, yeah, but there's nothing, yeah, we can't, we're not voting for him, there's nothing we can do about it.
I understood the reason why we need to have five voting members here in Edison vote for somebody qualified, 'cause if we don't, we're gonna end up having that racist, uh, Woodbridge Councilman Kyle Anderson vote for us.
Watch out for your language.
He's not gonna vote for us. He's actually gonna appoint somebody. And I want members of the public to know, he does, uh, put out photos promoting, um, the kill, killing cops.
Come on, stop, stop that, stop that. Stop all that.
I don't have to, I don't have to stop anything. Still my time. I still got time?
Thirty-eight seconds.
Thirty-eight seconds. I'll just ignore you for thirty-eight seconds, so, yeah. Um, no, I respect you, Jerry, but you can't be defending Councilman Kyle Anderson.
I'm not defending anybody.
He is his own man and I'm from Edison, I'm allowed to, um, shame him.
But you gotta, related to Edison.
He, 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 it is, it is an Edison issue if you guys don't, if we, we don't get five votes, he's gonna appoint some, somebody. Is that not an Edison issue?
We're gonna cross up range when we get there, okay?
Exactly, but I'm, I'm letting you know preemptively, I'm doing a preemptive strike and saying, "Hey, you guys better pick your guy right, right away, otherwise, we're gonna have that lunatic pick for us."
It never happened in Edison, yes, so.
A lunatic outsider, alright?
Your time's up. Alright? Okay, any other public comments? Yes, David.
Jerry, do you want to clarify that it's, you have sixty-five days to make-
Yeah, we have, yeah, uh, the attorney just wanna make sure that, uh, the public's aware, we, by the policy, we have sixty-five days to appoint, but we're gonna do a better job. Hope that we can get it done this morning. Hope we can get it done this month.
And if you don't, and if you don't agree, then Anderson has to point, right?
Yes, let's not go to there if we don't need to, all right?
That's right, we don't need to.
All right, thank you.
David, year five, Dairy Court, Edison. First, a congratulation to new Board members, Mohin, Virginia, and Jerry for the new position here at the Board, BOE. And also, I thank the rest of the Board members for your hard work, because it's a volunteer job for you, takes you a lot of time. You are representing the residents, taxpayers, parents of the Edison to manage the school. And at the start of the new year, I also want to emphasize that you are, I mean, for the next year, we, as the parents, taxpayers, we hope you to manage the school well so that we can have a very good school district. And on the other hand, as this Edison First Team has promised during the campaign, that you're going to control the budget, that there's going to be zero budget increase. And as a taxpayer and a resident, we're going to, hopeful that's going to be the reality this year. And also, we don't want to compromise the school quality. So thanks, everyone, for doing your, for this challenging year, doing your job, and hopefully, we're going to see a better school at the end of this year. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, Kimon. I thought you were the last.
I wanted to be after him.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, first of all, I just want to congratulate Jerry, Mohin, Virginia White. And, you know, it was a tough fight, and you guys won, and people who won, they are our leaders. That's number one. It doesn't mean that people who have lost, you know, and they are taking interest, like Crystal said, everybody has a chance to consider. You have to consider for filling the position of Ralph Eric O. That is true, but everybody should get the fair chance, not the only people who come on the podium and say something about their campaign and their ideas, okay? So that is a very important thing. Second thing is, like CV and, you guys are old, and Mohin and Mrs. White are new, and I'll expect that you guys support and you guys work together, no matter who's, which candidate you have supported in the past, but now work as a team for the better education for our kids and our town. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. Anybody else? See none? Motion for adjournment. All in favor? Meeting adjourned.